Thank you.
All right, I'll call the meeting to orders, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Mayor McFettrich.
Here. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 12th.
Just one?
Second.
Second. Any corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close motion carries. Approval of the minutes on July 15th, 2021.
So.
Can I tell you? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Presentation of petitions communications and general question period for members of the community. Would you like to give us an update on any county business?
Well, I mentioned a few things. I was pulling out of Hudson Headwaters a couple of weeks, maybe week and a half ago, and I looked to the left and I said, this isn't the best place to be pulling out of if, you know, if you're old and feeble. And fortunately, I'm not old and feeble yet, I'm old but not feeble. So, I did call Melissa, and Melissa said you folks have already sent a letter in, I believe, to DOT, and the town has also done so. So I called Dan Steck's office, and when I called, the lady I talked to was very much aware of it because she immediately knew that they'd also put in for a third lane, a turning lane there. So, you know, the turning lane may take some time to study, but there's no reason moving that 45 or making it 40, moving it east by 1,000 or 1,500 or 2,000 feet. You shouldn't take or call any, you know, any kind of a study. So, they're supposed to call me back, so I'm going to be pushing Steck's office to get the DOT to get that done because...
Thank you.
Yeah, because that's a 55 mile an hour zone, and it's just...
It's terrifying to pull out of there.
Yeah.
Or even to turn in because they're coming...
Yeah, but at least you know it's coming and you can wait, but when you're pulling out, you've got to look around the corner, and it's around, it's down a hill and a curve and everything, and you look left, you look right, and, you know, so, yeah. So the third lane, you know, may materialize too, but I don't see holding that speed limit up for that.
Okay.
Because that might take a study, but I shouldn't take a study on the other thing.
Great.
So I wanted to let you know I'm doing that. As we all know, we could all rush to Canada starting today. But I was talking with John Canosa at the Health Department, and he says, of course, those tests aren't free, so if you want to go to Canada, you've got to take the COVID exam. And he said if your insurance isn't covering it, and most insurances won't cover it unless you had a medical reason to do it, they can't say, "Cover me because I want to go to pick up something at the IGA in Nicole." So it's about $240 for a COVID test.
That much? Oh, I didn't know that.
If you've got to pay for it yourself, yeah.
You didn't know it was that expensive.
Yeah, that's what he said, so, you know. So I don't think too many of us would take casual trips there. But if you've got family you haven't seen in years and you're going to spend a week or two, well, maybe, maybe it's something you might want to do, but boy, unfortunately. But that's, you know, that's... When I first heard that, August 9th, I was all excited.
Yeah.
The earlier you hear about it, the less excited you get.
Yeah.
And of course, speaking of that, 19 new cases reported today from since Thursday within the county.
I didn't see that.
I didn't see my report from a year ago, but I'm looking at last year's report. I think we had, on the 7th of August, I saw it, and it was, I think we had four active cases a year ago.
Oh, my goodness.
So we think we're better off than we were a year ago, but not according to what we've got for actual cases right now. Fortunately, again, talking to Canosa, he said most of the people are within family groups, so it's not spreading all over the place. And he said the people have been vaccinated, they can transmit it, but they're not getting serious symptoms. So you're still registering as having it, but you're not getting serious symptoms, but doesn't mean you can't carry it and give it to a seven-year-old or somebody else who hasn't been vaccinated.
Right. Okay.
So, uh, sales tax, you've probably seen the reports on the sales tax. Revenues are up, better than expected, way up over last year, of course, but a lot better than it, of course, Mike Zolo always guesses low because he doesn't want to have it turn on us, but right now, so far, the sales taxes are doing good. Has the village done anything on the all-purpose trail being named in honor of Mr. McManus?
No, we haven't done anything on that yet.
I've talked to Jed Thon in Rouse's Point, he's for it, so I'm sure that once things go on, we can...
Yeah, we haven't discussed that, but I'm sure that, I'm sure people would be very supportive of that.
Yeah, so I'd like to get that...
Do you have a timeline for that?
No, I'd like to get it done, you know, this, you know, by early, you know, September, October.
Okay.
Get it dedicated. I don't know what we have to get as far as physical item to do that, but once we get it passed, then we can start looking into what kind of an actual physical thing we'd need to mount there.
Would you put one at each end, or...?
I don't know, you know, it's whether we could figure that out after, I guess. The first thing is the, because, you know, I don't see much sense in the Rouse's Point end because it's all wide open there, it's just alongside the road.
Unless you did at the golf course road or the actual trail.
Yeah, you'd have to do, but even then, it wouldn't be in Rouse's Point, so there wouldn't be any sense to do it in Rouse's Point because it's outside of the, by the highway part. There's nothing that's actually in Rouse's Point that we have in the town and the village of Champlain, yeah. And the other thing I think I've got is, I'm talking to you about the vets banners. So I talked to the guy from Hometown Cable, and he's ready to come and do a show, yeah.
And he agreed with you?
I got him committed.
He agreed with you?
Yeah. Took some arm turning, but, you know, so as soon as you get that, was it just one that was...?
No, we had a couple.
Couple?
A couple, but the bucket truck is just not repaired, so I don't see those going up anytime soon.
I think if you held the ladder, Nikki, it would...
She'd scramble right up there, yeah, yeah. I'd give her a little boost.
Could be wrong.
I'm looking for a million years, so...
Uh, yeah, we can do that sometime soon.
Yeah, just let me know when it gets up, then I'll get that...
Do you want to wait until that particular one is up?
Yeah, I want to, I want to, well, we, well, even if we...
Because we do have 15 or 20 up, so...
We have, we've got the banners, so we've got the banners, we can still show where they're going to be and show the banner. Important thing is to show the banner, so I guess we don't have to actually be up before we do it.
Well, they're all up except for those couple.
Yeah, I mean, they don't have to be up because you've got them, so we can still show them and say, here's where they're going to be or whatever, and then, yeah, so we can get that, get that done. Any questions for me?
Let's see.
That don't require a lot of brain power.
I don't think so.
Okay, good.
County seems to be, county seems to be doing well.
Well, you know, Zolo and his crew are, you know, are good, and every department has really stepped up from the last year. So, you know, it's, it's doing well.
Yeah, that's great. We're happy to be a part of it.
Yeah. And I will be sneaking out here shortly because I've got a...
Oh, that's fine.
Granddaughter is up from Iowa, so...
That's fine, I really appreciate you coming out, that's great to see you.
I don't get a lot of opportunities.
Yeah, well, I know you're very busy, yeah.
Committee meetings, you know, every legislator's on five committee meetings besides the two monthly meetings, so...
Wow.
Committee meetings don't always follow where you want them to.
It's a big time commitment, plus you have the travel.
Yeah. Half hour there, half hour back.
They don't come up to Champlain to hold any of those meetings?
No, they did that, boy, that was a long time ago. They did that, I can't remember because I recorded them back then, and they did that. They went to different communities and held their meetings.
I kind of like that idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. You could mention it.
But where would they hold it?
Right here.
In the town, in the Champlain Village, Rouse's Point Village, and we'd have...
I don't know.
In a tent, that's in Edwater.
Yeah, there you go. All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the report from the codes enforcement officer. I think I rewound off that. I don't know if you have any questions on it, I'll answer to the best of my ability.
Does that, so it's checked out, fired, does that mean there's another one? Or, which, where are we? Towards the bottom.
We're two of them.
There was one there.
Yeah.
Yes, there was one there in the stairwell. Displaced a couple of people for a few nights, and then it's been repaired.
Is that the one that we...?
Yes, yes. Any other? You can see we're still moving, we're plotting forward on our engineering report downtown for that one building. Hopefully, something can be done with that sometime in the fall. Report from the mayor, it's short and sweet. Good evening, what a relief it is to finally have Route 9 paved. I thank you all for your patience with the bumpy surface, the cones everywhere, and the raised edges from adjoining streets. The final result is certainly welcome and well done. Our own DPW crew has been working to prepare a couple of our streets for paving as well. Please slow down when you pass them in the streets. This is extremely hard work, especially in this heat, cleaning ditches, clearing edges, and removing large rocks. Thanks to them for this effort. I recognize that the river is a popular place to cool off during the summer heat, but it is dangerous, and we do not have any public beach to swim safely. We have posted signs in Bill Earl Park prohibiting swimming. Please do not swim at the boat launch, and in particular, do not jump off the dock in the kayak launch. The new basketball hoop is up, and the lines were painted on the court yesterday. Thank you to all the volunteers who came to help us. It's good to see that many people are enjoying shooting some hoops. We also have two pieces of playground equipment to install and hope to get that done soon. There will be another concert with the Taylor Valley Band on August 26th at 6:00 PM in the Park on River Street. Bring a lawn chair and come enjoy the music. I hope to see many of you there. Remember to support the farmer's market on Saturday mornings from 9 until noon. There's always a great selection of local produce as well as craft items for sale. May you all enjoy the last month of summer, stay healthy, be kind, thank you. Report from the trustees. Chuck?
I've got a few things. First off, the farmers market's doing well, and quite a few people come through there.
That's great news.
Got a question, and it came up at our Knights Club meeting about, are we going to do anything this year for Halloween like we did last year? I think that was well...
Well, we've been doing the trunker, we've been doing the trunk or treat for about four years now, I think, so I think we would probably continue that. Yeah.
So I'll let them know because we're in favor of doing it again.
Great. Good, yes, I would say yes.
I think that's pretty easy to do.
It's easy to do when people love it.
Yeah.
And if the weather's bad, we'll go indoor somewhere.
Which we've done.
Which we've done.
Which we've done, yeah.
And it's still worked well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yes.
Oh, and another thing is, I talked to Janet about having like a senior game night, maybe starting in the fall, and I spoke with Jim, and he said they're still interested in doing that.
Okay.
And so that's something I'd like to, maybe we could get a little, something put in for next water in Sewerville, just a little note, is that possible?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And we just come up with, whether it's going to be like one night a week or one afternoon or whatever, you know, how we're going to go about that.
Yeah, we can work out how often.
Just get some kind of publicity. And maybe we can get people calling in, seeing what they're interested in, and what type of games. You know, we have some games that would probably...
I have a lot of games, too.
Whether it's, it wouldn't be like Monopoly that takes too long.
Yeah.
Some other short-term type games, whether it's cards or whatever. I think there's a need for it out there.
I agree.
And, you know...
Some way to socialize.
There's a lot of things for the kids which is good, but for the seniors, I don't think there's really a lot of...
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
Sounds like Calvin, you know.
Yes, older but not feeble.
Only in the mind.
Guess, on the resolution for the playground dedication, probably be next week or next month's meeting when we got Tom and Kim here.
I would prefer that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
If you have any dedication, let me know before that.
Yeah, I think Chuck's going to kind of be in charge of that. Do you want to explain it to Calvin, I mean?
Well, last month's meeting, I brought up to the board about the dedication of the playground, Recreation Park, in honor of Clark Harwick. And the board was in favor of it, so I'll have to get the resolution finished and present next meeting.
But can you have the actual ceremony, let me...
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure when that would be, but we'll let you know.
I mean, it could be in the fall.
Yeah.
Doesn't... I would just ask you to, you...
Would you?
Yes. To organize it, please.
We'll take it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Go ahead, Nikki.
So we're still having wonderful turnouts for the front runs. We've had our third night last night, and we have one left in August, which is our big picnic, so it's always a pretty good turnout for that, too. So we've had over 20 kids.
Yeah, well over 20 kids.
Well, my kids, okay. And there are families from, not just the village, but there's some coming from the town and...
Ellenburg, I think.
Ellenburg, I believe, yeah, so we have them coming from all over, which is nice, you know. My geocaching event went okay, I had three families come by, and since then, I've seen that they've gone out a few times on their own, and the kids love it and they don't want to stop, so that was nice to introduce them into something new that they could do. We had the kids' farmers market a couple of weeks ago, which was a great turnout. We had five families, there was a total of eight kids, I believe, that each had their own little item that they crafted, made, and put together to sell. Then we have one coming up on the 14th also. The basketball court looks great, thank you to the volunteers. I just drove by and there's someone up there using the line, so that's good to see. And we'll finish the three-point curve at some point, but it's not so hot.
I've got a comment on that last night when I walked by, where's the three-point line? I said it was wet.
Well, yeah. I have to figure out that paper, I have to roll out the paper to see where the stencil, to see where the lines are and how that gets put together. There are pumpkin plants still in the garden, but there are plenty of blossoms, but I do not see any pumpkins, so that might not be anything of use this fall.
Still trying.
Yeah. We'll see. What else do I have? Oh, I'd like, I'd like to go ahead and do a fall festival, I think something in just the park, just, I don't know, horseshoe tournament, if we can get the volleyball net up, maybe something like that.
Thought someone was supposed to pick that up.
They decided to go with the town and use the new park across from the school.
Oh, yes.
So there's a volleyball net up there, where the baseball field is going in and...
Which is being used.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm there twice a week for track, and almost twice a week it's being used, and I'm up there.
But that group did say they would help us put ours up.
Yeah, I was just...
That's it, yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so I have to call our other two board members and FaceTime them so we can do this bond resolution. Hi, Calvin, thanks again for coming.
Have fun, yep.
It's always good to see you.
Take care.
Okay, so just give me a minute. I need my little stand.
Is that on your desk?
Yeah, it's on it. Oh, hi, Tom.
Hi, John, how are you?
Good.
Willow?
Oh, Willow's participating?
Well...
Thanks, Mary. Okay, just a sec, I'm just trying to put this in.
You'll have to be... Hi, Nikki.
Hello.
Hi, Tom. Kim.
Hey, Chuck, how are you?
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so, you ready?
Okay, all right. So first I need a motion and a second so we can discuss this bond resolution.
I make a motion.
All right. Just going to read the beginning part of it. This bond resolution is dated August 9th, 2021. Resolution authorizing, subject to permissive referendum, the reconstruction of and construction of improvements to the water distribution system in and for the village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $1.6 million, and authorizing the issuance of $1.6 million serial bonds of said village to pay the cost thereof. Whereas all conditions precedent to the financing of the capital project here and after described, including compliance with the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, have been performed. I'm not going to read all of this, but I'm going to read one part at the end.
Okay, well, we both reviewed it.
Okay. Upon this resolution taking effect, the same shall be published in full or summary form in the official newspaper of said village for such purpose, together with a notice of the village clerk in substantially the form provided in Section 81.00 of the Local Finance Law. Pursuant to the provisions of Section 36.00 of the Local Finance Law, this resolution will be adopted, subject to permissive referendum. Okay, so we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Trombly.
Aye.
Trustee Trombly.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye. So the resolution has thereupon duly been adopted. All right. Thank you. All right.
You're welcome.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Yes, we will, all right, thank you. Yes, all right.
I'll see you sooner.
Yes, okay.
Bye, guys.
Okay, bye-bye. Sorry, can't get that to go off. Okay. All right. Report from the court treasurer.
Everyone has their expense and revenue report for July.
So everything looks to be pretty much on target. Sarah, is there a motion to...
What's that to?
Do you have, anyone have any questions on just the report, the expenditures? All right.
Okay, so everyone has a, we have three transfers to do for the warrant. To F 1440.1 Engineering, $3,144.75. From F 8340.2 Transmission and Distribution Equipment. We have one to go to G 1420.1 Law Personal Services, $785. From G 8130.2 Sewage Treatment and Disposal Equipment. And the third one is G 1440.1 Engineering Personal Service, $65. From G 8130.2 Sewage Treatment Disposal Equipment.
I don't have that sheet. It's in my box?
Yeah.
Oh, it went in after I left.
So the one, that one for engineering services for water, part of that is going to be reimbursed once we complete our transfer of the funding. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion. No questions? Roll call.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
Now we have the warrant with additional invoices of $4,645.20 for a total warrant of $47,666.96.
So this, is this hose adapter what was added in there?
Yes, yeah, that came in after.
Okay.
Is that that to the total?
Yes. Yeah, that's the handwritten one.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
Call me a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions of any of these expenses? The cooking, the cooking class, I don't know if I would explain that. We're getting the grant for that, but meanwhile, the instructor needed to purchase some of the items, so this was the easiest way to cover that.
How many were, it started today, right?
It started, yeah, it's going on right now. There were supposedly six if anyone shows up, which is a perfect amount. Hopefully, they, they're all there. Roll call.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
Okay, now, the other thing is, we've already opened up our store capital project account, which we got that bond to start paying the bills. So at this point, we have one bill that needs to be, needs to be paid of $20,607.90, plus we've already from our own village funds spent $15,736.74. So I just want a motion to pay these out of the capital project.
So...
A second? Do you want her to explain that in any detail?
Do you have, you know what one?
So it makes sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, it's the, because we had to start paying them before we even got our funding.
Right.
And the same thing is happening with water, but we'll, that'll be next month.
Yeah, we'll take them one at a time.
Good.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. Anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. Report from the superintendent. He did leave a report here. I don't know if anyone has had the time to read it. It was on my desk when I came in. Yep. They'll be doing, they'll be doing more paving, village streets. They've been working on South Street, took out some enormous rocks. Yeah, they were huge.
Well, yeah, those dips, yeah, that's how prospect was.
Yeah. Any questions on any part of this?
No, I have one question in general.
Sure.
Is it, is it possible to do some patching on Maiden Lane?
Patching on Maiden Lane?
There is really bad. I mean, there's places where there's no, no blacktop at all, it's kind of.
This side.
I think it's probably going to depend on how much asphalt there is.
I mean, just, just patching, not paving, just patching.
I'm sure they, I mean, they do that occasionally. It doesn't always hold, but.
It is pretty bad, especially on the side where the kids are also.
It's something to mention to Mike, you know, he can put it on his to-do list. There are probably other streets, too, that need some general.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. But I definitely will bring it up with them. Any other questions for Mike? I did mention about the bucket truck. We do need to find the hearts so we can put those banners up that we had to get replaced. I know those.
Those, those boxes one, how do you?
I asked Mike about that. I believe they do.
CTC one? CTC one, it's not us.
Um, I don't know. That came up, too.
I don't know, I'm just kinda.
It might just be a matter of right now, it's just they're out so straight that they don't even have time to go borrow one. But I know at least one family is concerned about the flag or the banner not being. And I can understand that. Okay, correspondence.
Chip funding from New York State Department of Transportation. Letter of reservation from Jim Robbins for the planning board. Grant request letter from Mayor McFetrich for solar foam charger bench and second quarter sales tax distribution in Clinton County Treasurer.
Just a couple of notes on the, on the correspondence. For the solar foam charging bench, that was, that, that grant request was denied. So we still have $5,000 that has to go towards some kind of green project. $5,000 isn't very much when you're talking about green energy. So we work with a woman out of Sariak Lake on these projects and I've asked her to suggest some other ideas because I don't really have any that don't cost a lot. I'll keep you posted. And you can see that, as Calvin said, the sales tax is up, so that's very nice. New business?
Okay, new business, number one, if we have this small amount that has been sitting in an account for years and years. The problem is it's costing the village $20 to keep this account open, $20 a month. We have ways that we were, we have money put aside that covers most, usually covers most of our fees, except that now we're getting to the point where we've been going over a couple of times. So I need to, what I want to do is dissolve this account because it was used for the water project. Is to take the $742.06 out of this account and transfer it to F 8389.4, which is the water debt account. When our auditor was here last week, I did ask about that and he said we would have to do a resolution to transfer that money.
So does a simple motion cover a resolution? It's funny, I was looking up the difference between resolutions and motions today.
Well, who said, he said a resolution, but I think it just needs.
I think a motion.
I think it just needs to be emotional proof.
Yeah.
I mean, it's such a, I mean, it's not like it's a huge amount.
Right.
It's just that this has been there forever and ever and ever and this is like when I first came here, so. So we know it's been there a long time, but it doesn't earn any interest, doesn't earn anything but a piece of paper that they sent us.
So can I have a motion to put that?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
$700.06.
$742.06.
Okay, all right. You made the motion, it can go. Check second. Any other discussion on this? Roll call.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. Capital Water Project Account Transfer ARPA Funds.
Okay, just one second. Okay, so we, number two is that we, we want to make a motion to, because we already know what we're doing with the ARPA money, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, we're going to use it on water. So we received $53,627.05 as our first payment. We just need a motion to transfer that amount to a capital water project.
Slow move.
Second. Discussion. We need to start using it because we've got some bills, of course.
And that'll be next month because I need to.
And it'll be next month, but at least it'll be in its proper place.
And I asked Tom about that, too, and he said that the easiest thing to do is to transfer, if you can transfer it out instead of doing it into, you know, into water fund and transfer it to a capital project is to automatically transfer it to a capital project fund, which would be easiest. So that's what we're going to do.
Okay, well, let's do roll call on that, too, since it's dealing with money.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. The bond resolution we did. I'd like a motion to close the regular meeting.
Slow move.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss a contract.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's, let's go, let's go in my little office space.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To accept the land donation from.
Yeah, the ownership.
What's that? Motion to accept?
Accept. Land donation.
No second.
Any other discussion? I would just publicly say thank you to the Co-Pals for that generous offer. It's really heartwarming, I want someone who wants to invest in the village and, and has a vision for something really nice, so I really appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed motion carries. Old business, we have sidewalks.
Janet, what about this?
No.
Which?
That. Stay online.
Oh, I put that under old business because we had talked about water training before. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I just looked at it. I just.
Yeah, I just put it under old.
Okay.
Sorry, I wrote it online and I didn't tell anyone where it was. So for sidewalks, maybe you noticed that the, it was in the paper, I think, on Saturday?
Yes.
Yep, saw it there. And the bins will be opened on the 23rd of August. And I just thank Mary for working so hard on that, that format.
Yes.
It's really complicated. We've had a lot of complicated business in this office recently and Mary wanting to have just, just really, really working hard and trying to keep me so I know what I'm, what the heck's going on. So I do, I really do appreciate that. I don't think there's anything else about that, but we are moving forward on that.
That's good.
Yeah. The last thing that I added was the, the training. Just a minute. You'll remember that last month we approved up to three people, I think it was, going to some training to the west of here. None of them are going to do that at that particular session. But Woody did point me to some online learning. That is through the, we belong to the American Water World Association or something like that.
Water Works.
Water Works. And they offer some online learning. And for three members, it's a cost of $320 per year. And there are plenty of classes that will count for their required training. So he suggested that we do this and it'll be much easier to get their training done.
What was the amount we approved last time?
$600.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would like $200 a person.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is less expensive. It's a year program and he said there are plenty of classes.
Right.
So I need a motion to approve the base price of $320 a year for this online learning.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Is this to be added to the warrant or, or is it something to be paid with a card, maybe?
I think it could be paid with a card.
Okay, so we'll just approve the purchase and we'll figure out how we're going to.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll just stay on the next month's warrant.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right, yes.
Okay. Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. That's all I have. The last one, I think.
There's some chunks of car mat by the sidewalks that they, the corners where they worked on. We put sidewalks in the, this corner, so there's, I got that picture.
Which, which?
Um, by the little garage. On Main Street there.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't go in the side right off of. There was two different spots, I think in front of the, the building you happened to walk there. There was a spot, just, just chunks of little turnbats just sitting there.
There was a chunk by where the, we had our farmer's market.
Just a chunk that we can pick up and move.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably, yeah, it's just like.
Well, we couldn't use that yesterday when they were holding down the pit.
You're right.
We're finding little tiny stones.
This one, it's probably not, probably not that big, uh.
Yeah.
But they did pick up a lot of the.
There's a few pile, worth a pile.
Oh, okay.
Just like they forgot. No, it was a couple of days ago.
Because I know there was a lot, as you went up Main Street, there was a lot all along the side road and I drove up there today and I didn't see any of the big piles.
Maybe they couldn't be up since.
I didn't see when I walked today, but maybe I missed it.
Driving the, out in the country, out of the village.
And also State was doing the, the, where the water goes into the lines and the streets. They were picking those up, must be making sure that they could get them up and down along Main Street.
Oh, the grates.
The grates, yeah.
Well, that's something we can check on and get that, get that cleaned up.
But there is a lot of little pieces all along, in people's driveways and stuff like that, they never swept up.
But there's, yeah, that's a pretty big pile.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay. Right. Check on that. All right. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This motion carries. Thank you all. So Chuck, I think we should get together and we'll talk about this game, right? I'll have some ideas because we have done it before as a one-time deal, not as a regularly scheduled thing.
It's fine.
Oh, Nikki, don't want to say your second.
I found in these past.
I got yard dicks.
I was going to say Sunday afternoons are good. In the winter, Sunday afternoon.
I don't have, I don't have the sheets. I've been looking to staff, turn them offline or something.
Wouldn't be starting by July 6th, September 11th.
The Boy Scouts are using the Indian house on Sundays.
What's that?